Ready to call our new order?
No.
Later than that.
Yep. Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order for the Wildwood Ranch assessment hearing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and residents that are in attendance here today. If you have not signed in, please sign in in the back so that we can have your name and address. Later on during this preliminary improvement hearing, you'll have an opportunity to come up here and talk about any questions that you might have or concerns about the project that's being proposed. So this is one of the steps along the way during an assessment project for street improvement. It's for Wildwood Ranch Drive improvements. That's a project that's been on the list, capital improvement list of the city. They've included it in their improvement planning, looking out over the next five to 10 years, and it's a project that has been slated for construction this year in 2020, reconstruction. So preliminary improvement hearing is one of the steps, as I said, along the assessment process. Chapter 429 is the state statute that we follow for assessment procedures. And we'll go, one of the first steps that we do is complete a feasibility report. That's been done. It's been accepted by the City Council and set this hearing date today so that we can go through that report, talk about the proposed improvements, talk about the estimated costs at this time, talk about how the costs would be assessed and what costs would be assessed, and then schedule going forward on the rest, the remaining steps in the process and how it would impact you as homeowners. So I'll go through this presentation, and then we'll have an opportunity for the City Council to ask questions, and then we'll give you an opportunity to come up and say your piece to the council if you would like.
Do you have a handout on this?
I do not. We can make you a handout after the hearing. So the project extent is Wildwood Ranch Drive from the intersection with County Road 103 to the end of the maintained portion of the roadway, which is at the cul-de-sac. These illustrations are from the feasibility report, which is available in its entirety here at City Hall for you to review if you wish. I'm just going to hit some of the main illustrations. This is the platte of Wildwood Ranch Estates. We have, within the platte, there are 12 properties, 10 platted lots, and a common area outlot. And there are two larger tracts that are on the inside of the curve there. The road is completed to the cul-de-sac area, but the right-of-way extends all the way to the east to the next property boundary. Okay, this road illustration shows the existing conditions. So the roadway surface is about 18 feet in width, and it has a standard city cul-de-sac radius at the end. There is an area in dark there that shows an area that has shown some stress from subgrade issues, we suspect, and there's also some drainage that could be improved in that particular area that's been noted. Also, the roadway surface has some severe cracking at different locations, and the cracking seems to be going all the way through into the base. And so that's part of the reason for doing what we're going to call a full-depth reclamation, which is to grind the road in place, the pavement and the subgrade, and leave it in place and correct the subgrade areas where we've noted issues. That may involve taking some material out and putting some granular material back in where we're seeing some pavement deflection and excessive cracking. This is the city's street standards for different roadways that experience different traffic Wildwood Ranch Drive would be considered a minor rural roadway, serving in that range of 11 to 25 lots. So the pavement width of 18 feet is the standard for this type of roadway, and that's what's being proposed to go back in. This is the cost estimate from the feasibility study. And the cost estimate is estimating volumes of blacktop mix that would be needed to repave the road. It includes subcutting and replacing some of that subgrade material where we feel that's necessary, and restoring it back with topsoil and seed along the edges. It also includes a 10% construction contingency in the event that we run into some materials during this reconstruction that need to be removed and replaced with granular material that's stable. It includes the city's cost for preparing the plans and specifications, administrative and legal costs if needed for a typical project, a typical assessment project. And so the estimate in total for the project at this time is just under $118,000. So the project has not been bid out yet. We're at the estimate stage right here. If this project moves on by the City Council, which there will be a council meeting later this afternoon to consider this, is whether or not to go to the next step, which would be to prepare the plans and specs and bid the project. So that's something you should be aware of, that there will be a council meeting following this hearing later this afternoon where the council will consider going the next step with this project.
At 4:30. Yeah, just in case you want to come back.
So when we look at the, how is this project being assessed? We're following the Cross Lake City Assessment Policy, actually in ordinance format now, and that's on the basis of benefit to the property. It's not necessarily based on project cost. It's based on an appraiser's opinion of benefit to the properties in that setting. So that may vary from across the city, depending on the type of properties involved and so forth. So the city hired Nagel Appraisals, Appraisers, to do a benefit opinion analysis of the properties on Wildwood Ranch Drive, and they came back with a benefit opinion for each property on this project that would range anywhere from $3,000 to $7,000 per lot. So the city takes that into consideration and looks at how costs would be implemented for the project. So here's this $3,000 to $7,000 per lot is what the appraiser is saying. A lot would benefit by that amount, whatever the city sets within that range. So the city has gotten this information. We reviewed it at Public Works Commission level, and the Public Works Commission's recommendation was to proceed with a value of $4,000 per lot within this project area. We are looking at the 12 lots within the platte, and then there's the property to the east that is also accessible to this project by the right-of-way. And so potentially, there could be 4,000 times 13 properties is $52,000 assessed on this So when we look at what the assessed amount is versus what the city's amount estimated is, it works out to about 44% being assessed, 56% being paid by the city. Okay? So the city, when it assesses road projects, will set the interest rate and period of assessment over which it will be assessed. And just to give you a scenario of what that might look like on an annual tax payment basis, $4,000 over 10 years at 5% interest would be about $518 per year over the next 10 years. And I would mention that the statute does allow, once the assessment rule has been adopted, the assessment statute does allow you to pay your assessment in full without accruing any interest if you pay that within 30 days after adoption of the assessment This slide lays out a tentative schedule, and right now, we are at the hearing on improvement stage. That's about the fourth line down, and that was originally scheduled for around January 31st. We're here February 24th, so everything is moved about a month, and that's really based on getting everybody here that needs to be here for these meetings. This is a city-initiated project, so we need four-fifths vote of the City Council at each step along the way, and this is the date that we could get four people here. Okay? But moving on, you would see the next step would be resolution, ordering improvement and preparation of plans. Then the city would need to approve the plans and order the advertisement for bids. We'd review the bids.
David, excuse me, but that's what you planned on doing at the 4:30 meeting, correct?
Yeah, you'd just be considering the resolution, ordering the improvement and preparation of plans this afternoon. So we anticipate construction would take place over the summer. It would likely be wrapped up with some other city projects to try to get a bigger contract and benefit of a better price, unit price, when we have a larger contract. There are other city roads that the city is planning on doing this summer, and so this would be included under one contract that would be put out for bids. Okay? So the city has a choice along the way. There's one more hearing where all of you would receive notice once again, and that would be the final assessment hearing, where you would get the opportunity to come back in after you see what you're going to pay for your assessment, which, in this case, unless it's changed by the City Council, we're looking at $4,000 per lot. You would have the opportunity to come in at that hearing and talk to the council about the value of your assessment and whether or not you feel that is something that you have a hardship or some other reason that that assessment should not apply to you. So that final assessment hearing can take place either at the end of the project or after the City Council receives bids. So we may have, may hold that earlier in the summer after we did bids. Would be our recommendation. Before we get into November, typically, the City Council would certify the assessment rule to the county auditor, and that would go on to, into the tax rolls for taxes payable for 2020. So you would begin seeing those on your property tax statements in 2021. I think that concludes what I had to say. If the council has some questions for me, then we'll open it up for the public.
When was Wild Ranch, when Ranch Drive put in? How old is the road?
The road, going back to the platte itself, was around 2005 when that was originally constructed.
Okay, thank you.
So Dave, have you dug into it to try to figure out what the cracking issue is on the road?
Have you done any soil tests or anything?
We have not done any soil tests. The, there's a number of different reasons that could cause the cracking, deep cracking. It's soils that are in the subgrade that shouldn't be there is one cause, potential cause, like organics, topsoil, things like that. Could be wood material that was buried.
It's kind of every 100 yards, huh?
It, cracking usually does show up in a, usually a 20 to 30-foot period.
No, it's just, it's kind of odd the way that's cracked, don't it?
The other, the other thing that I've seen cause that type of cracking, especially when it's real deep cracking, is when, just before a road is paved, the utility companies jack a, a utility line, telephone line, or electric cable through the road bed, and that bullet plow will leave a void underneath the road bed with, where the knife comes down from the surface to the bullet head, and that will continually bring material down to that void over the years, and crack will form.
Did you check with utilities to see if that corresponds with the cracks at all or anything?
Well, we'd, we'd have to look at it and see if that jibes with any of the locations of pedestals that are out there. But that's, I'm just saying, that's something else that we've seen that has caused that type of cracking to occur, so.
So you got an eight or $9,000 contingency when you take it? You can take the surface, grind it off, completely off?
So a full-depth reclamation is a machine that would go, take about an eight-foot wide swath, and it, it will grind the pavement in place with the base material and blend it together, and it will just be left in place. And what typically is done then is a grader will go and shape the road and usually thin that material down, and then we'll add some Class 5 to that, our traditional aggregate base material, and then repave it after it's compacted.
And check the compaction of the areas that are falling, failing.
Yeah, look for areas of deflection and, and the areas where we know there's some severe cracking, we may have them do a little bit of exploratory digging in those areas to see if there's some material that needs to come out that, that we don't want there.
Nobody else? Why don't you open it up? Or go ahead, Eric.
There's two of the properties that would be east that are, are being assessed, but the third one is not. Why not?
There's two properties there.
There's two properties, but there's, you look here, you got one, two, three.
Well, those are question marks. What are those properties? That's got nothing to do with that.
So there's just one property that's off to the east.
You got this one, and you got this one.
Just directly east of the right-of-way.
But right in, in the cul-de-sac, it looks like there's one. Well, that was a, are they connected? Is that one connected to the business then, to the, or is that the horse barns?
There's a garage there.
Yeah.
Due north of the cul-de-sac.
Right here.
That's, that's one of the two properties that would be assessed.
Okay, so those two.
Okay.
And then going straight through the cul-de-sac, that's a right-of-way going to the other piece of property.
Right.
That could be used sometime.
Could be used, could have access to this road.
And then it would be assessed at that time?
No. Is there any best?
Right, right now, we, we talked about that at, a little bit at Public Works Commission, so it could be 12 assessed properties, or it could be 13. We can decide that.
That's why I was trying to figure the 12, 13.
Yeah. So right now, we just calculated out 13 being assessed, and we'll have to look at that property off to the right and see, is that, is that experiencing a $4,000 benefit due to this project?
Okay, thank you.
So the two larger parcels are being assessed at 4,000 each?
Yes.
And they don't have a driveway off the road at this point?
One does.
This one does. Oh, yeah.
This one here has access, but it may not, may or may not be using it.
So whatever assessment we come up with on this plan, it can change on the next project. Is that true? Or are we trying to come up?
It likely will because the appraiser opinion will vary from area to area throughout the city.
Whenever it layouts different, like this one, you know, sometimes you don't dedicate that east to the cul-de-sac so that you have the right to charge somebody to connect to the road. The way this got platted, you're not going to have a choice. So if you don't do it now, the people to the east there, you can't go back and assess somebody after the fact. This is your only chance to do it.
Got you.
And that, that's this platte. It's kind of random. I mean, every platte you're going to see, or every neighborhood's got different, unique characters to it, or just like subdivision will be another point. If you're going to go per lot basis, that right, one to the right there, looks to me like you could have more than one lot. It's pretty big. So your methodology has to think about, this is your one crack at it, so you can.
Well, the two to the north and east are also large.
I, I hear you.
So I.
So there's 100 ways to assess somebody, but you kind of have to look at it per project because I've done lots of them, and every one of them seems to be some new feature that comes up that you hadn't thought of, you know?
I'm just trying to do it fair moving forward, and if we're doing them one lot for the bigger parcels, that's not a best-use case of the property, because the best use is five lots or something in there, and that's fine. I'm not saying that we should charge them five lots, but I, I would like to see it hold true on the next one and the next one also.
You want to be consistent, but again, there's some things that just don't, not apples to apples. Every neighborhood's got something unique about it.
Any other questions from the City Council?
No, let's open it up and see what these people have to say.
If you would like to come up and address the City Council, this would be your opportunity to do so.
Please do, we're not going to bite you.
I have a question.
Could you come up to the podium, please? This, this is a legal proceeding, and it's a public hearing, so we have to have you come up, I'm sorry.
State your name. My name's Thalma Williams, and I'm on the first corner as you come into Wildwood Ranch Drive. And my question is, when you're doing a project like this, do you put culverts in if they need to be put in?
Yeah, we, we do. If there's a, if there's a known issue with drainage, we'll take a look at that during the design.
Because I know especially around that curve.
Yeah.
Further down, and then also, I get water on my driveway, from the, water comes in from the ditch.
Okay.
And it seems like there could be a culvert there, but I don't know if it'd benefit that much of putting one in.
Sure.
But you could check it out.
Yep, that's important information for us. If the council authorizes the plans and specs, we'll need to know that, so.
Engineers are supposed to look at things, and they've already called out some, but that's one of the reasons to have a public hearing. They don't live there, and sometimes here are obvious for some things and not others. So if there's things the neighborhood thinks should happen, it's always best to tell Dave just in case and not assume he already knows.
Thank you.
You can come talk to me.
You will.
Thank you.
I'm Doug Gaines. I live on 33853 Wildwood Ranch Drive. So if you're off on the estimate and the bid is much higher, does that mean the assessment's going to go up?
No.
If the bid is lower, will the assessment go down?
No.
No, it's going to stay at 4,000?
Yep.
So one thing I do want to point out, in a, in a spring where we get quick snowmelt, water does flow pretty heavily across the road right there, okay? Right near the swamp. This is Dave's truck.
That's right, right here.
And it's pretty, pretty heavy. You can see a lot of water in the woods between our properties. I've even seen some points where his driveway towards the road has been underwater a little bit in a quick spring snowmelt. So you might want to do something there as far as to help, okay?
Thank you.
Is, is that running off of the themeless property?
Probably the what property?
The, the ranch.
Where's ranch?
Well, I would say it's more the ditch than the ranch.
Okay.
The ditch is lower than the property at the ranch, so.
I would just say, I went back to, what if the project comes in way higher than the estimate? It just might not happen this year, because again, somebody's got to pay that cost, you know? So that the city's share would go up, and it might mean that they would just vote it down even if it got this far along, and then try again, maybe hope there's a better market the next year or two, or maybe come back and propose a higher assessment. I'm not saying any of those things will happen, but it, those are possible.
But once it is approved, it is what it is, right?
Once you award the bid, now it's for sure to go. Right now, we're going off an estimate, so, and we've, this is all we can do at this point because we don't have bids. But now you're, if you go yes, they do final designs, you can get an accurate bid, then they set it out to the market, get real bids, not an estimate, and if they're way off what we were thinking, you might stop the project at that point and say, hey, let's, let's hold off and try another year.
Anybody else have anything, public?
Okay. I do have cards here. I'd like one. You can have one. You can call me with any questions that you might think of after this meeting. You might want to come back later this afternoon at the City Council meeting to see what transpires, so. I think that's all we have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, thanks. Thanks for coming. Shall we adjourn the meeting? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.